For the purposes of this meeting, we're going to... Item number four is the discussion and recommendation of the housing addition, the Young Street 6 housing addition. Item five are remarks and inquiries by us. And number six are remarks and inquiries by the citizens. We're going to do item number six first and then do the other items. With that said, I have a recommendation that was... That's been provided by the city manager to us and I'll pack it. And I'd like to read that. It says, "Based on my knowledge of this project and as my professional opinion, there are two options for the planning commission. One is to deny the request and two, to conditionally approve the request. If we choose to deny the request, the justification would be as follows. Lot sizes not meet the square foot minimum as defined by the ALVA code of ordinance. The lot width does not conform to the city code minimum and there is not adequate off-street parking per dwelling. Along with these reasons, other issues include not preserving the openness in the living areas, possibly allowing overcrowding, not providing for access of light and air to windows and for privacy. If the planning commission were to conditionally approve the request, all of the aforementioned deficiencies would need to be corrected." With that said, we're going to do item number six. Remarks and inquiries by citizen. Your responses or your comments are going to be limited to two minutes and you need to identify yourself.
I've got a letter that I'd like to give to the commission.
Okay, can you go ahead and bring the letters up to us, please? Be sure to speak loud.
Hi, my name is Ross Ellis. And I have given you the letter here, but what they're proposing, that several of these lots, matter of fact, two of the lots are only 121 square foot. The housing for a single-family dwelling in an RGA is 8,000. They got one that is 4,400 square foot. They've got one that is 6,600 square foot. Another one is 6,500. What they proposed on lot one, from what I could read with their proposal, was that they had the front lot combined with lots one and two because they owned two lots of record. And then they owned a tract behind those of 110 foot wide by 155 foot deep. But they combined those front two lots to make a 75 by 110, which would make that illegal lot. But that also deprives them of a house on those two lots. And to give to those back properties, I don't see any way that they're going to do it unless they buy land from the Nelson addition to the south and bring a street in because those two properties behind would not own a street. And nothing in this proposal meets the code, nothing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question on the consultant... My name's Kenny King. The... I think I read in the paper that there's a consulting that the city is hiring that also consults for lift frame? Is that correct?
We use three different engineering firms in the city of Alva. One of them is Crafton Toll. And that is presently only for the purposes of the Strategic Land Use Task Force that was established at the last city council meeting. And it is not germane to this company. It's a different part of that firm than the engineering firm that... My understanding, it's a different part of that firm. We're using the city planning side of that firm and not the construction and industry side of that firm. So...
Kenny, I asked the same question at city council because I was under the impression from one of our meetings that we were using the same company, the same firm. And they explained it to me there that we're using the one that he's using, but we're using him for a different purpose altogether. It's not for the same thing that what this is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I mean, that's an explanation, but I just don't think that's a good idea because things happen. You know, there's different meetings that happen that aren't part of the situation. You know, what's to prevent him or anybody that has an issue to walk in and discuss it and not have it public to where we know what's going on? The aura of improper business is great, in my opinion. You hear things going on in the government and different councils and all of that. The most popular word around is collusion, I think. But it just doesn't seem kosher to me that the same council or consultants should be allowed to intermix with this particular situation. And I don't know as it would happen. Might, might not. But there's always the suspicion there that if this project is approved, that something may have been influenced by who knows who. So that's one issue. And I'll speak to another one later, so take one minute off my time.
I don't know anything except to say that Crafton Toll has not been asked to do anything except for the Strategic Land Use Task Force plan, which two of the people in this audience were sitting there that I think would have probably shared that opinion. I would tell you guys, everybody that's sitting out there, that public meetings are going to be how we make sure that all of this is transparent and nothing is... There's no behind-the-scenes anything going on. Because it's... You're right, that conversation is rampant at many levels of government. I hope that there's enough trust in this room, but I don't say that we're deserving of more than what we deserve. But the two shall... The two issues shall not cross.
Well, you and I both know that, you know, there's people in Alva, there's people that I've known in Enid that I would trust with my baby child and that. And turns out they embezzle from the church or... I mean, there's just all kinds of stuff that comes out that is improper and that. And who would have guessed that at all? You know, so that's just my... Maybe I worked for corrections for too long, you know? But that's an issue with me and I want to...
Kenny, on this particular matter, it's my understanding that Joe Don reached out to the other engineering firms that the city uses for recommendations that pertain to...
Matt, can you speak up?
Sorry.
All for open meetings.
Now, wouldn't they?
But you're not to be loud enough that we can hear you.
It's my understanding that Joe Don reached out to the engineering firms that are not Crafton Toll for the purposes of input on this project. So even though the city has contracted with them to help develop a strategic plan for future land use, they were not part of the city's dialogue on the matters pertaining to this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There we go. So we've reached out to other firms not involved to get independent opinions.
Yes, sir.
I live up... Tim Boganshaw. I live up on Young Street next to Kelly Park. The street is going to get added more traffic and we've got plenty of traffic up there now. The thing about it is, they run up there in 30, 40 mile an hour. You sit out there, a kid is going to go to school down there, lives down there in them houses. They're going to walk up the street to go to school. There's people running up and down 20, 30, 40 mile an hour. They don't care. I've seen it happen. I go out there and walk my dog in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening. And they still go zip, 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 zip. I don't know if Kelly knows that or not. But I'm out there about three or four times a day, maybe seven or eight times a day. Depends on what the dog wants to do. But there's... It's busy. And we're going to get six more families down there that run up and down Young Street? I think it's a public problem.
Does anybody, just to show of hands if you don't mind, does anybody disagree with the advice that we read earlier to deny or have the property conform with current code?
I'd add that that recommendation is drainage. But I didn't hear that mentioned in the reason for the denial because the way that they're going to cover the property will not allow for proper drainage. You're going to have way more percentage of coverage on those lots that would not allow for that.
Yes, Mr. King.
Just a question to the commission. How many of you have actually walked to the backside of that property to see the drainage issue and that back there that comes down onto the addition work that I live in? And it... There's just nothing there. And it goes right down straight at that lift station down there.
I have not walked down there, but I have heard of what it's doing.
Y'all need to drive down there and look. You can see where the water runs because all the grass that comes off his lawn...
Yeah, there's mud.
Runs down there and the grass that runs right... You can see the dirt and it goes all the way down to the block. I drove back there and looked. I didn't get out and walk. You can see it.
Okay. Sir, in the back, you had a comment?
Yeah, Jay Huring. Marge and I live at 1311 Young Street. And we have to back out on the Young Street a couple of times a day, I suppose. And you always have to be real careful because there's people going up and down that street too fast anyway and they park on both sides of it. It's real narrow. And I just don't think that that's an appropriate place up there to put another high-density development. There's only one reason he wants to put a whole big... Another high-density development up there and that's to attract a bunch of college kids to move in up there. And they'd be going up and down Young Street all the time. And I just don't think that's a good place for a high-density subdivision to go. I mean, there's a lot of places around this town that you could put it where it wouldn't put me a problem there, but he just wants to put it there so they can attract a bunch of college kids in there. We already got a bunch of college kids living across the street. My five or six of them, I was across the street. They're all parked all over the street there. And it's just going to be a big problem. Marge and I walked down that lot the other day and it is. It's all roden down there and running off to the west and all that dirt's roden down there. And they put another five or six houses in there and it's just going to be a mess. I'd like to see the commission deny this whole thing. Go put it someplace else.
I'm Tom Crenshaw. I'm one of the bordering neighbors to this project. And I'm going to read you the same thing we read to the Board of Adjustments when they proposed it before them as opposition to it. And one thing that everybody keeps bringing up is traffic. And that was one of the biggest issues. The other was that kind of a volume hitting the water line right there. This thing's going to affect the water up there. It's going to be... Our water pressure's got to go down if you've got six houses coming right into that one point. The leveling of their property has created erosion from my property and erosion onto my property, Forest Nelson's property, Shrock's property because they have built the back of that lot up about two, two-and-a-half feet higher than all the surrounding land. And it's going to cause a runoff. Particularly if you put that much in the way of housing on that, you're going to get a big runoff. And all that runoff's going right into the Ninth Street Drainage System, which has been a pretty big problem for the city for several years, as it is. I... They started out, you know, have made promises to us as neighbors of what they was going to do. And I don't know if they will continue to do that. If you deny this project, I would hope that there is some way to get the problem situated back the way it was. If they decide that they're not going to do the project, hopefully we can get, you know, something done that they'll work with it and get it done. If you approve this with conditions, the conditions that you have listed there are pretty vague conditions. When it says, "Too many houses." Well, what's too many houses? Now they're proposing six. Do they come back next week, propose five? The next week, four? I'd hope that if you deny with conditions that you make those conditions meet, that they have to meet RG-8 conformity. And I don't think most anybody in this neighborhood, most anybody that's here is going to complain if they'll meet RG-8 conformity. We'd like to have... We'd love to have the house torn down with an eyesore. But we don't want that kind of a density housing in there. It's too much traffic coming onto the road in one place. It's our water in one place. It's the sewer in one place. And there's a reason why frontage is included in things for lots. And they're going to have to have a lot of frontage to put that many houses in there, which they don't have.
Thank you for your comment.
I just have a question for... That lift station, is that... Has anybody... My question is, is... Are we going to have to have a new one built to handle the sewage that comes from there?
Well, that lift station's got to be modified the way it is, regardless of what goes in there. It's not working properly now. And there's several things that need to happen to it that have got to have... That have got to happen whether lift frame housing addition goes in or not.
But if... And I agree because I lived down there and that. But the second part of my question is, is if this lift station, and they're expensive to put in. If it has to be new, I mean, it's... You're going to have to upgrade it anyway. But is the cost... Are the city... The people of City of Alva are going to be having to pay for that? Is that coming... Going to come out of our funds?
It's the city of Alva's responsibility to maintain that lift station.
How about if you have to increase it because of this housing sale?
It'd be the city of Alva's responsibility to maintain that lift station.
And answer that question.
To the appropriate level. So yes, it would be the city's responsibility. It is our lift station. It is our... It is ours to maintain and upkeep and do whatever work needs to be done to it.
Kenny, I think another way to say it, though, the recommendation that we have is to deny. Hypothetically, if it were to go in, then it would be... It could be a condition, whether it's this one, let's just say it's some other place in talent for hypothetical purposes, that if a development were to happen and the infrastructure were not adequate to meet their needs, it could be a condition of approving the development that the property owner, you know, assist in that. You know, this conversation probably isn't going to get there with this issue. And there's a lot of hypotheticals and questions of that nature. But likewise, if the planning commission and city council felt like it was worthwhile to our community, the city council would bear the burden of that, whatever that infrastructure expense is, unless it was felt like it needed to be a condition of approving a housing addition. So it is all hypothetical at this point. It could go, you know, either way. It's probably not likely to be an issue with this request.
Last thing, I'd like to recommend that this be denied. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you refresh my memory for me? Originally, they wanted a variance for that development. But they withdrew that request for a variance for a good reason. Will they come back and ask for a variance again on this deal?
We cannot... We can't tell them to not ask for a variance, but we can tell... We did bring information for the planning commission members and I'll share with you that if someone were to request a variance to our local codes and ordinances, that the application... There's four criteria that must be met. The application of the ordinance to the particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship. And with that, a financial burden on the property owner does not count as a hardship. Item two, is such conditions are peculiar to the particular piece of property involved. In this situation, the debate would be whether this property is unique compared to the rest of the neighborhood. You know, at surface value, I don't know that there would be enough evidence there that this is peculiar in order to grant a variance. Item three is that the relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good or impair the processes and intent of the ordinance or the comprehensive plan. So it couldn't materially change the city's strategic land use plan by implementing such a variance. And the last item is that if granted, the variance would be the minimum necessary to alleviate a hardship if that hardship existed. So if it did go to the Board of Adjustments, that would be their criteria. And the planning commission, though, cannot restrict a property owner from requesting a variance. It would just have to go to that body for process. But we... Given the opportunity, we can help make property owners aware of what's required in order to seek a variance.
Yes, sir.
This is kind of within the same realm of what we're doing here. I don't trust this guy.
We're not here to discuss personalities or personal conflicts. We're here to discuss...
You don't trust him.
Tim.
We can't.
You're...
Okay.
I just... Please, let's keep this to the code and the ordinances and the facts.
Fact, doesn't have the frontage.
Kelly, true.
Fact, there's enough frontage for one house. If he goes to get a variance, which is in the variance adjustment board, he'd have to get a variance to put two houses. Fact, got to have 8,000 square foot per resident for a single-family house in an RGA. Fact. We've been fighting this last... I've been in shorts and now I'm wearing a jacket. I strongly urge this board to deny it just on the facts.
I've got a question. If you vote to deny it, what is that going to do? Does that mean the place can't be built on? Or they can't build on it? Or does that simply just mean that, okay, this proposal of six houses is denied. They can come back and say, "We want to put five houses on it."
So...
Or if you approve it with the conditions and put the conditions that it has to be an RG-8 conformity, then that means whatever they do, coming back, it's got to be that, doesn't it?
They have the following options, okay? They can present their development to conform to city code or they can apply to the Board of Adjustments. And it goes before that board, like you said. Adjustments? Yes.
Which means basically they're asking for variances.
And again, the Board of Adjustments would adhere to the criteria that I read off a little bit ago.
And he was reading from state statute.
State statute.
It's Title 11, Chapter 1, Board of Adjustments and in relation to variances.
You know, I'm Ross Ellis again. You know, if... They have one lot, which is a 60 by 150, which is 9,000 square foot. And the other one, lot number two, is 50 foot wide by 150. And it lacks 500 foot of reaching the 8,000 mark. If they ask for a variance there, because most... A lot of the houses in that area are 50-foot lots. You know, and that was evidently what was a lot of record at that time. And I don't think we'd have a problem with a variance for lot number two for them to have two houses on that frontage, you know? I don't think any of us would have an objection to that.
Really, we just want it to be in the conformity of the rest of the codes for the neighborhood.
Well, that's our principle.
And that approval of this would open a can of worms. The tube face, you could not put back in the tube fast enough. Couldn't. It would be a test. You would see developers coming from every stitch of the world and buying up things and putting four houses on them in your neighborhood. And I'd be one of them.
Once again, they need 8,000 square feet per lot.
Per house.
Well, six times eight is 48,000 square feet, isn't it?
But you got to have frontage.
But you still have to have frontage. Well, but yeah, they don't have enough square feet.
They've only got three-quarters of an acre.
Are there any other facts you want to hear?
Okay, do you have remarks by the planning commission?
I have one.
Oh.
Forrest.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
I'm Forrest Nelson. I wondered who's going to be responsible to alleviate the drainage problem that goes across my property. The mud and water has washed down toward the lift station. The city can't even get to the lift station right now with a four-wheel-drive vehicle. There's so much mud down that they can't even get in there. But whatever is done with this property, this property needs to be put back to its original condition to alleviate the water drainage problem. condition to alleviate the, the water drainage problem. And also, I have never seen an easement across my property for a sewer line.
I've, I've never heard of anybody that has stated that there is easement, uh, along that backside back there. Is there a, a drawing or a map that shows, shows that? I guess, I guess easement would be...
I don't have a map that shows where easements are. I do have maps that show where my water and sewer, uh, they're, well, approximately where my water and sewer lines are. There's some discrepancy about where some lines are that may not be exactly right, they would be close, but not exact, but as far as a map of easements, I do not have that.
I, I do wanna, at the bottom of that hill that comes from their, their lot, their lot, that comes down across Forest, the north lots of Forest property, that all of the drainage from Forest development comes down and goes right past that, uh, lift station and goes under the university's driveway and right there, it's just on, I think, the east side of the baseball diamond, in between the baseball diamond and the maintenance shed, I think, and then it discharges on the, on the north side of the, that drive area around down there. And, uh, there's a lot of water that comes down through there and, uh, it's just not muddy, I mean, it comes down the pavement like that, but there is a lot of mud, and I've got, took pictures of it, that comes right down into that, that area from up above up there.
Remarks? Planning council members?
I just wanna say thank you guys for doing your homework. I'm impressed on how much you guys have researched and...
Okay, item number four, discussion and recommendation on the plot approval for Young Street six housing addition.
I move to deny the Young Street six housing addition.
Okay.
Say it.
Yes. Hampston?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Corneely?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Dean Bridge?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned at eighteen thirty-eight. Any motion?
Back to the adjournment.
Second.